Good evening. Thank you for joining us. You want to make yourself comfortable. We'll be getting started here shortly. Good evening. Thank you for joining us. It is 6:30. We're going to go ahead and get started. We're going to call the Castle Hills Regular City Council Meeting to order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We're going to go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief, will you lead us in that? Thank you, Chief. See, we have any citizens to be heard? I don't think we have anybody signed up. Okay, first up is the consent agenda, item A. Well, we can do it anyway. You can do either A or everything. Do we have anybody that wants to make a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I have one correction to it, and then I'll make the motion for the consent on it. Agenda is on the page four of the minutes of the July 14th meeting. It references an item number one. Oops, I'm sorry. I'm reading the wrong one here. I apologize. I take that back. I think it was correct, so I'll move the consent agenda.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Mayor, motion by Mr. Isbrand, second by Mr. Joyce. Mr. Joyce?
I do have one correction, I believe, Mayor, if I may, on... Let's see. On the financial report. On page that begins expenses by department. It's kind of the summary. This is consent agenda, item B.
Are we referring to the cover page?
The third page in.
Expenses by department?
Expenses by department. On the second line, there's a number there. It says 4524223. I think it's supposed to be 524223.
Yes, sir. I believe you're correct. We'll make that change.
Thank you.
Mr. Isbrand.
Okay, I'm sorry. I found it. It's page five of the July 14th minutes. Towards the bottom, it says, "The following person spoke, Ray Schultz, stated he and his wife, who's identified as Rachel Schultz." That should actually be Tinker Mass or Tinker Mass Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Do we have any other changes? Okay, with those changes made, all in approval? Unanimous. Thank you, Council.
Mayor, just want to make a note that we did send it out ahead of time, too, and we're going to continue to do that, so.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Rappley. New business, public hearing on an application from Villa Gomez Engineering Company for an original plat of 6508 West Avenue in the city of Castle Hills, Texas. Legal description, legally described in special warranty deed recorded under Clerk's File Number 20190037220 in the official public records of Bear County, Texas. It is 6:34, and we're going to open the public hearing. If anybody would like to speak, now is your time. Okay, it is 6:34. We're going to close the public hearing and proceed on to item number two. Discussion of possible action on an application from Villa Gomez Engineering Company for an original plat of 6508 West Avenue in the city of Castle Hills, Texas. Legal description, legally described in a special warranty deed recorded under Clerk's File Number 20190037220 in the official public records of Bear County, Texas. Mr. Ziga, I believe you're here. Do you want to make any comments?
Good afternoon. I'm Jose Villa Gomez with Villa Gomez Engineering, representing Mr. Ziga. If we got any questions, we're going to happen to answer them. It's a 2.37 acre tract of land proposing an original plat. The property is zoned, a single-family residential. The biggest issue that we had with this plat was the drainage. There's a natural low running through the property. And we prepared a drainage study submitted and approved by LNV. We determined that the... We determined the water surface elevation, put a note on the plat for, you know, any finished floor to be above it, and we determined that there was no adverse impact to properties upstream or downstream of the site due to the development, the single-family house. Any questions if you want to happen to ask, enter.
Mr. May?
I have a question. The square footage of the residential portion of this plan, how many square feet is that?
Mr. Ziga is the landowner and the architect. Good evening, Council. My name is Felix Ziga. I'm the landowner and the architect. To answer your question, Mr. May, the residence is planned as a minimum 1,600 square feet, which is what's required for a non-conforming lot.
And a follow-up to that, I thought this was a very interesting and well-laid-out plan for that particular unique parcel. And I drove by, and I couldn't get a good frame of it. I think I now know where the footprint of that residential section is, but how many trees will have to go for the plan?
As of right now, all the trees that are there are going to be saved. We've already removed what is going to be removed, with permits, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm here to answer any questions, Mr. Villa Gomez. It might not be a good answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question. Related to drainage. Is the floodplain anywhere nearby? I mean, with all the water coming through here, I wondered if it's in the floodplain.
No, sir. The flood, I mean, it connects to the floodplain. As soon as the flow leaves our property, goes into Box Colberts underneath West Avenue. And when it exits down, I guess that's south or east of Antonian, the floodplain begins just south of West Avenue there, but not on our property, no, sir.
Okay, thanks.
We are proposing a drainage event that will encompass the natural low, just to prohibit any construction in there.
You're running out of land. I don't think you can get another reason.
No, sir. It's a little envelope that they're going to build on.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Rappley the question.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gregory, Mr. Rappley?
This is not the same property that came before the council a few months ago and was rejected, is it?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
Mr. Villa Gomez, just to confirm, we have a letter from our city engineer recommending approval. That's correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I just want to get that on the record. Any further questions, Council?
I'll move that we approve the plat as proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. May. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much, Council.
Thank you.
Item number three, conducted public hearing on the proposed tax rate of .516038 per $100 of taxable valuation. It is 6:38. We're going to open the public hearing. Okay, if we don't have anybody, we will proceed and close out the public hearing at 6:39 and proceed to item number four. Discussion and action to... Discussion and action to set a date and time of the meeting to adopt a 2020 tax rate. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor. We just need Council to act on... Or taking action for the September 15th date at 6:30 for the final adoption of the and levying of the tax rate.
Mr. Isbrand?
Mayor, I'd move that we set a meeting for September 15th, 2020, at 6:30 PM to adopt the 2020 tax rate.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Do we have a discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Proceeding on to item number five, conducted public hearing on the proposed 2021 fiscal year budget. It is 6:40. We're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Okay, I guess we don't have anybody. It's 6:40. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Proceeding on to item number six, discussion and possible action on FY 2021 proposed budget. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to circle back with Council. Based on our last discussion of this, if you look in the packet that you had there, that essentially, when I provided the budget to you all, was balanced. We were actually fortunate to have a rerate to come back a little closer to about four and a half percent on our healthcare. Originally, I had plugged in close to 40,000 increase in revenue for the sanitation rate, which would have been close to a $2 impact. And so what I've done, now that we've done the rerate, we got it about four and a half instead of the 10% that I plugged into the budget. It was a savings. Essentially, cut that in half. And so, coming back, I'm just proposing on the garbage fees that there would be just about a 50 cent increase. And then, as Councilman Isbrand asked to look into money for the website, we've been able to set aside money for the upgrading of the website next year. And if you notice at the end, it's... We're over the 6,000, particularly. I have an idea of what line item that might go into a decrease. I'll need to speak to specifically our city attorney on the line about that, because what we've averaged with his services has gone over a little the last couple of years, but obviously, that's beyond Mr. Schnall's control from that standpoint. So I think there might be a little savings if we get back online with our attorney line item in that area from that standpoint. So my question to Council to see if there's anything else you wanted to discuss within the budget. I know that, you know, Councilman Isbrand brought up, you know, where the utility line item is and the discussion, how that broke out between departments for seven... We have about seven CPS meters. That includes our saws bills, and so that encompasses the one utility line item. So that's kind of how it's broken up in between, and it's kind of a percentage of sharing cost between the departments. And then, I think particularly, there was a question on the rack space, which we no longer have. Barcom, who's our IT services, does the email exchange server on that one. I'm hoping eventually that we look towards housing our own server, that we can eventually do it in-house, so we can cut away from that cost down the road. And starting in January, what we're going to be moving towards is the state contracted for fuel, so I'm hoping that'll see a decrease in next year's budget as well. That'll allow a lot of our patrol and public works and fire to go to other fire stations in the area at a cheaper cost and at a cheaper rate through the state, now that we've done the state contract that we did back in June.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. I think lowering down the legal bills would hopefully be something that we can do successfully next year. Council, do we have any other comments? Mr. Isbrand?
I would actually just like to thank Mr. Rappley and the city staff for all the good work they put into preparing this budget. I know that these are uncertain times. There's challenges. There's speculation that has to be made, and I think that there was a very responsible approach that was taken. And I'd also like to thank you for looking into the matters that I brought up, and I think that there are some items in this budget that really helped to put us on the path to looking to the future in terms of space utilization in this building, and the way that we communicate with our constituents and other important aspects of it. So I'd just like to thank you, Mr. Rappley, and the staff for the good work here.
And again, this still maintains the portion of the tax rate that has for the debt payment of the streets for the $3 million as well.
Perfect. Mr. Gregory?
Mr. Rappley, under the pros section, you said that staff has incorporated Council's recommendations up to this date and changes highlighted in yellow. Well, I didn't get anything highlighted in yellow, so the question will be, is what you were going to highlight in yellow, has that been already discussed?
I think what we were trying to do, and that maybe did not come out in the copy in the packet that was highlighted in yellow, which may show up as a shaded area, which we talk about the sanitation revenue fees, which is shaded right there. And then, if you look at the second page, it says 8,000 for upgrade. That's for the upgrade of websites. So that actually should have been in yellow, but it's just shaded in gray, and that's what it's referenced to, sir.
Thank you.
And those are minimal changes. Again, if you see the shaded area across the board, that recalculates our TMRS, or excuse me, the increase of only the 5% of the health provider across the board through all the departments.
Mr. Isbrand?
Mayor, I'd move approval of the FY 2021 proposed budget as presented.
Second.
First, by Mr. Isbrand, and second by Mr. May?
Well, I think that... I think the idea is that if there's any action you need from this point on, that final action will be done in next week's council meeting on September 15th. So if you're happy with the proposed, how I have it today, obviously, changing a couple line items there, and I'll bring back the final one, that's when you do the final adoption is on the 15th.
Well, then I don't move approval of the FY 2021 budget. We'll look forward to next week. Thank you, Mr. Rappley.
I would ask Mr. Schnall if he has anything on that matter. Mr. Schnall?
The Local Government Code, Chapter 102, does require the governing body to take some action tonight. I understand, and so Mr. Isbrand's motion, if everyone is comfortable with it, is something that could be remade. If staff wants to tweak a few things, then the appropriate action tonight would be for someone to make a motion that the city council set September 15th at 6:30 as the meeting at which the budget will be adopted. But the Local Government Code does say that after the public hearing on the budget, the council is to take some action. That action could be to approve the budget if it's ready for approval. It can be to recommend to staff certain changes, or it could be, what I just suggested might be most appropriate tonight, is for the council to act to set a date and time of September 15th at 6:30 for final action on the budget.
Mr. Isbrand?
I swear that's what I said. I would move that we schedule a meeting for next... I'm sorry, the date again was...
September 15th?
September 15th, 2020, at 6:30 PM for the purpose of adopting the proposed FY 2021 budget.
Second by Mr. Gregory. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council.
Mayor, I would be remiss if I didn't speak about a couple meetings ago where I had unfunded requests from departments. And some of those, again, were in the fire departments, Public Works, and Police, and I just want to let everybody know that there was the unfunded item request for the fire department for the extractor and the cascade system and the upgrades and improvements to the living quarters, which has been accepted and approved by the county for reimbursement. From that standpoint, there was a station generator request. Chief is looking for a grant for that right now. Also, one of the big things that Chief had was a certification pay that's not included, so I just wanted to mention that. And obviously, we don't have colas rolled in for our employees this year, so I just want to make sure Council's aware of those things.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Proceeding, item number seven, discussion and possible action on Resolution Number 2020-09-08, authorizing the city council for the city of Castle Hills intend to establish a pace, a city pace program administered by ACOG, referencing the required report and setting a public hearing. Mr. Rappley? I believe we have a former Councilman John Clamp here with us tonight as well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, we do, and as you recall, Council, a few months ago, Mr. Clamp was here to present about the PACE program, and Council could not take action immediately. The next meeting, you did take action. However, there's a four-step process to becoming and adopting the PACE program, and this will be a two-part process, and Mr. Clamp will be walking us through that. I'm going to get his presentation loaded up here, sir.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Council members, thank you for having me back again. It is a two-step process tonight. It's the briefing that you, most of y'all have seen already, and then at a call of a public hearing, there'll be a public hearing, I believe, on the 22nd, and then the final adoption of the PACE program, and then the appointment of an administrator, which is most likely ACOG at your pleasure. So that's kind of tonight, and then two weeks from now, we'll have a two-step process. And then I'll wait for city manager to get this up. Is it just the right thing? Okay. And Mayor, I'll go rather quickly, since y'all have seen it before, but it's up to you. I'll just kind of take your lead or the Council's lead on this particular program. So again, my name is John Clamp. I am the CFO at ACOG, and we are even, you know, among all this COVID and all these other things, we're still doing PACE, and we're getting out in the community and educating and working with our city partners to make sure that these positive things still happen. Do I need to put the power on? Thank you. So what is PACE? Property-assessed clean energy, state codified program. It's really, the basic of it is the innovative financing used for commercial buildings and improvements that save money on water and energy. So that's the bottom line of this program. It's a financing program initiated with third parties, not city-related, not county-related, typically a private bank, private building owner, and the PACE program itself. So the city, your city, would be out of any minutia in terms of any money or things of that nature, so it won't even hit your balance sheet and those kinds of things. So really, PACE answers the question, how are we going to pay for it? Many projects require some gap financing, and this is a perfect program to provide that gap financing at a lower rate. It's very attractive for lenders and the developer to make a project work in terms of interest rate and economies of scale. Again, PACE provides and will only work if the investment is lower than the savings, so you're going to save more on a project, more than it costs, and that'll be amortized that, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Bottom line is, what does PACE do for a project? It lowers utility costs, whether it's the water or the energy, electricity, or gas, those kinds of things. It lowers that cost, and it increases the net operating income of that building. So if you're a tenant, hopefully, you get that pass-through on tenant pass-throughs. You get a lower bill. If you're the billing owner and you own it outright, and you don't have any tenants, then that basically drops to your bottom line. Typically, this is what happens. You'll have a typical building. Many landlords see that it'll cost a lot of capital investment upfront to do a project, so they're not as apt to take that cash flow out of their billing, because it takes many years to get that recoupment, probably six, seven, eight years before they receive a return on their investment. So this PACE program, as you'll see, kind of levels that out. Let me skip that one. The other slide was, it was very painful to do a traditional financing program. So this one is for PACE. You'll see that there's a longer repayment plan, and it really depends on the investments that are done, whether it's an HVAC, solar, water improvement plan, those kinds of things. They'll take an average life of those projects, and that's how far they'll amortize out the investment. And as you can see, you'll have increased NOI throughout the entire project, because the savings exceed the cost. Oops. Pretty fast little button there. Okay, let me go back to that slide, Mayor, manually. Something still worked the old-fashioned way. Let me go. So really, before this slide, the PACE program can finance up to 100% of the project. It allows up to a 20-year payment plan back, and the obligation of that particular building can transfer on the sale. So if the building owner decides not to pay it off at a sale, it will transfer, because the documentation is recorded at the county court office. Okay? And it doesn't tie up the borrowing capacity of the builder, the building owner. So again, what is Texas PACE? It's a local adoption and economic development tool. So what you're doing here tonight is the first step, so you'll be able to use this. There's been a project identified right off of Blanco Road that will probably be the first project to use the PACE program in the redevelopment of that project. Again, 100% long-term, low-cost financing, and it really is for energy efficiency and water conservation projects. Key, too, is that it's for commercial, industrial, and multifamily projects over five units. There you go. So how does it work? Get a building owner, find a contractor, third-party contractor. Again, nobody, the government's not involved. Select a project, identify a capital provider, so somebody's got to lend money on this project, and apply to the PACE program. The owner signs a contract with the PACE program itself. The capital provider signs a contract with the county in exchange for the assessments. And then the funding supplied contractors complete the project, and those payments go directly to the lender. So we work with, ACOG works with Texas PACE Authority, who's the leader in the state of Texas on this. They have over $100 million in projects. They do the back-office financing, application approval, the vetting, all the standards that are required to make the PACE program work. So we work very closely with them on this particular program. Again, talking about Texas PACE Authority, they have, if you ever go to their website, texaspaceauthority.org, they are very organized. They have all the legal documents there, so there's no... It's really advantageous for the building owner and the lender, because all the required documents statutorily are there. Some attorneys may make some tweaks, but 95% to 99% of that document is complete and ready to go. So it really makes it easy and convenient for a building owner to move forward on a project. So again, what we're doing here tonight is we have posted the program on the website. We're holding the resolution of intent tonight. And as part of your motion, if you, the council likes to move forward, is that they will set a date and a public hearing for that date. Intendentively, it's been set for September 22nd, right, city manager? Two weeks from now?
Yes.
Okay. If it's not, we can, that's fine. We can change it, but I think it is two weeks.
Okay.
So how does the local government benefit? Really substantial savings in your utility costs, reduced demand on your electric grid. Y'all don't own your own utility company, but if you had your own utility company, you would see a difference in that. Really enhance the value and the efficiency of the buildings and make it more presentable in your city, and enhance your economy, and support the state's water conservation plan and other county-wide type conservation goals. So as we talked about before, there's no financial risk on your part. Really, this is an adoption-type program, so if you adopt it, once you adopt it, you probably won't see me but once a year to kind of give you an update on the types of projects that are happening in your city. There's no risk to the treasury, no risk to public servants under HB 2654, and typically, in terms of application and workload from your city department, most likely will be a referral from... department, most likely will be a referral from somebody in your city to me or our agency. But the word's getting out and about that they're actually just contacting ACOG directly and making sure that the city they want to do a PACE program in, that it has adopted the program. So there's going to be minimal, minimal impact on your staffing requirements. Again, the property owner benefits, innovative financing, it's got amortization on that investment, strong ROI therefore, and property value enhancements. They can also use other rebates or tax credits and other incentives. So if CPS Energy has some additional tax credits, or there's historic tax credits, or some of those types of things, they can also use that on the project as well, and they'll combine those for the PACE program. And lender benefits, because it's a secure investment, secured by the assessment on the project. The pace lien has a priority over other liens, and it's really picking up steam, as I'll show you in a few minutes. But this is going to be a high-demand type of product, product, once the word gets out, once all the cities are, have adopted it. It's going to be very competitive out there for the, for the market. And it really improves the collateral for the lenders, too. Most lenders want their collateral taken care of and make sure it's running efficiently and effectively. This is our region. We have a 13-county region. It's about 12,585 miles. I've been through most of it. It's a pretty large region, as you know, and then I will... There you go. So it's kind of hard to read, but so far in our ACOG region, we have Medina County, Comal County, Guadalupe County, City of San Antonio, City of Leon Valley, City of Fredericksburg, and the City of Hondo have adopted this program. The City of Hondo didn't have to do that, but they went first, because they're in the County of Medina. If a county adopts it, cities within the county do not have to adopt. But since Bear County has not adopted it yet, the city has the option to move forward with that. Again, this one, under the 2019, Texas PACE Authority, well over 110 million now. I need to update this slide, but they have, they're really doing great work throughout the state. As you can see, when it was, it was adopted in 2013, and it took a few years to get all the organization, the administrative work, all the legal documents, all those types of things, and then to start rolling out into the state of Texas to make sure that the counties and the cities were adopting it. So it is growing rather rapidly. We talked about, whoops, we talked about, we talked about, when a project is done, you're getting an engineer to look at the pre-utility impact, and then at the very end, you're getting another engineer to look at the post-impact. So they're verifying the savings, utility savings on these projects. So we're not just doing them and forgetting about them. We're actually doing them, and the Houston Advanced Research Center is actually tracking the utility savings on these projects. So they're, it's going to be a long-term deal, and it's good that ACOG, who's been around for 51, 52 years, is your administrator, and then Texas PACE Authority will keep track of those as well through the Houston Advanced Research Center. So those savings aren't going to be just lost somewhere. You got it? All right. Just real quickly, I'm not going to go through all these, but these are just some really good examples of some projects. You've got a small Dallas paint and body shop that had an assessment of 74,000, and their annual energy reduction was 92%. Next slide. You've got the Congregation Beth Israel in Travis County. An assessment is 450,000, annual savings to the project of $40,000 a year in utility and energy savings. Go ahead. Again, you've got Simon Property Groups, multiple counties, $10 million assessment. They save 7.3 million kilowatt-hours and 16 million gallons of water. So these are just some of the, go ahead, right, types of projects that can really benefit a community. And up in El Paso County Hospitality, they took an old vacant building and turned it into a hotel. The assessment was 9.2 million. They used some historic tax credits of the same amount, and annual utility savings of 1.5 million kilowatt-hours and 7.7 million gallons of water. So these are just some of the examples. If you want a copy of this presentation, you're free to keep a copy of this. All right, go ahead. Again, the underlying documents are really well taken care of by Texas PACE Authority, our partner on this. You've got the loan agreement, lender consent, owner contract, lender contract, and notice of assessment lien through the county. Go ahead. Really is a win-win for everybody. The property owners benefit, lower utility bills. Buildings within your community get improved, both visually, hopefully, and efficiently through energy and water, energy and electricity. Contractors, hopefully, within your community, get activated and get to know this program, so that they can participate, as well as your local lenders. So if you have local lenders that want to participate, we can definitely talk to them as well. State of Texas benefits, again, through their green, their water conservation and energy conservation plans, and the communities benefit all those in just maintaining a good, healthy stock of commercial and industrial buildings and multifamily buildings in your community. So it really is a positive program. Again, Charlene Hydinger is the president of the Texas PACE Authority. She works very well and very closely with ACOG. Mayor, that's all I have for tonight, and just as a reminder, in your motion to formally adopt your intent to, for the PACE program, is just to set a hearing date and time.
Thank you, sir.
And I'll be happy to answer any question. Yes, sir, Councilmember.
Yes, Mr. Clamp. I'm sorry, I didn't have the benefit of your first presentation some time back, but is, if a building owner goes to a lender under your program, is it easier for them to qualify for this loan than if they just went without PACE?
It, I'm going to say it depends. I think if they have a really good relationship with their lender, and they understand the program, and the less, less risk they would take on and the improvement value of the collateral, I think the lenders would be very advantageous for that client. I really do. Now, depending on who the lender is, again, the PACE program provides a first lien before all other liens. Banks are just starting to get over that hump of, oh, there's somebody else that has a first lien on my property. Once they understand the benefit and the value created for that project, they're jumping on board. But not all lenders are there yet. But there is a list of lenders that we can use and recommend to somebody if their local bank is not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Mr. Paul.
I didn't have the benefit of the first presentation either, but in looking at this, to me, you're just another lender. Now, I don't mean to be crass or rude. I'm looking at it from a structural standpoint.
Yes, sir.
I also see that you have the additional fees, which brings money into ACOG. I understand that. If I want to put a building in capital, well, let me back up one step. Because we approve this and move along, if we do, to me, like it or not, the people in Castle Hills that would come to you and use it would think that we are, in fact, part of this, no matter what we say and what we do, since we are technically saying it's a good thing with everybody doing it. I don't like that personally, because I know there's too much confusion there. If I have a project, and I've had some, and you go to a bank, go to your own lender, do exactly the same things you're saying, exactly the same things, you have outside lenders here. If you're an outside lender, I've been an outside lender in situations. I'm very, take a look at my projects that people want to use, very strong. So to me, the only thing I see different here is that it's a project that ACOG can make a little fee over, and I don't have a problem with that, because you're putting the stuff in. I don't see where it really benefits, because you're tying it to the water, you're tying it to electrical, you're tying, well, anybody that's going to do a building is going to look at all that anyway, in today's economy. He's going to get CPS credits, just like you're saying. He's going to do all the things that you're presenting. So that's one of the things that, I'm not saying it's a bad program.
Right.
I just don't know why there's a need for the program.
Right.
In our city. And then, like I said, it implies that we're supporting and sponsoring or whatever, where in fact, of course, we aren't. And there were a couple of other things, but that's my basic premise on looking and listening to this program.
Thank you, sir. And really, the main benefit for the PACE program is the lower interest rate that a bank would provide because of that increased collateral and risk reduction.
How do we know that? Because they're going to put collateral up on both sides. They're going to put collateral up with you, they're going to put collateral up with them. I see your fees. Now, that's another interesting thing, when I read this. Your fees start off at 1%, up to $5 million. It goes down in increments. So if I'm over there in this bunch over here, and then all of a sudden, I'm in the next bunch that's over here, how do you spread the fee? Or does this guy over here get a better fee than this person over here? Anyway, I'm just country boy trying to learn.
Point well taken, Councilmember.
Thank you.
And if I may, another question, Mr. Clamp, about interest rates. How much lower would the interest rates be under your program than with a typical line of credit at 4.5% or 5%, something like that, that a building owner could get?
You know, I'm not the bank, but here's, here's what I do know, that it's in demand, and to me, it's going to be a significantly lower rate, whether it's a half point or a point. And on a large project, that's a major investment in terms of interest. Again, it's not mandatory, so if it works for a building owner, it'll work. If it doesn't work, it won't work. So it's not, it just really depends on the project. You know, a smaller project, you're not going to get as much interest savings. But a $40 million project, when you're taking out $10 million for a PACE-type investment, could save tremendously on investment. There's no, there's no static rule in terms of what's my interest rate going to be lowered. It really just depends on the market and the bank.
Okay.
I wish, I wish I could tell you, but I just can't.
Well, I was expecting something like, well, if the market rate is 4.5%, we'll give it to you at 2.
That would be nice.
Can't resist that.
And it also goes to the financial capabilities of the owner and their relationship with the bank, their collateral, all those types of things really drive that interest rate.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gregory.
Thank you. Is any governmental entity, town, city, or county, not accepted this?
Well, let me, let me just say that besides the cities and counties that I mentioned that are in the ACOG region, the ones who have not adopted it are, is everybody else. So that includes Bear County, all the other cities. There's some, we're working on the northeast side now, City of Converse, Windcrest, Universal City. We're starting to move over to that side of town. But if they don't have an interest, we really don't go and talk to them. We just let it sit and let maybe a building owner or a building developer drive that conversation. So it's not like we've sent out a letter to everybody and say, let's all do this at the same time. It's more of, if there's interest, we come over and we give a presentation and we move forward.
So this money is coming from the state of Texas?
No, this is, this, there's no money from the state of Texas. It's all local lenders. So it could be Wells Fargo, it could be Frost Bank, it could be any of those banks. They just participate in the program through the state of Texas, through the PACE program.
I think we might have learned something from all the bank failures of 10 years ago. Gap financing is, was one of the riskiest things that caused a lot of banks to have trouble. If the entity goes under, we're first in line on a foreclosure, correct?
If somebody forecloses on a PACE loan, the county, it kind of converts to like a property, a past due property tax bill, and the county will go and collect on just that past due amount for the PACE loan. And so you'll get...
I want to say that again.
So if somebody defaults on a PACE loan, it kind of convert, it starts to look like a property tax past due bill, and so the county will go and collect, and they'll charge interest and penalties on that past due amount. And there is, to date, there has not been one, there hasn't been a foreclosure yet on any of the PACE loans.
No, we haven't had a recession since this program started. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Count, Mr. Clamp, can you let the Council know, I think the impetus behind this was that potentially this would help the new ensemble in certain ways, obviously through the energy efficient. Can you walk us through how that would help them with this particular building?
On Blanco Road? So, and I haven't talked to Patrick in quite some time, but this was part of his capital stack in terms of redoing the building on Blanco Road. What is it, 8?
In ensemble.
Ensemble?
Yeah.
And he's calculated where he can pay back that note over a certain period of time, reduce his payment to make the project work. So he's obviously not going to do that project, unless he's going to get a lower interest rate, and therefore, a lower, lower payment for him to make that project work. And he's been in, we've been in contact with him for, I don't know, a year, year and a half, as he's working through those details. So he's already talked to his lender and his partners and those kinds of things. But I will tell you, I haven't talked to him in quite some time.
Mr. Gregory.
Does this encourage risk investment?
I don't believe so, sir. I think this really encourages taking care of your building and running it more efficiently and effectively with improved systems, whether it's HVAC, solar lighting systems, and water systems.
Why, if somebody had a building, why would there be any need of gap financing? It seemed to me the primary lender would finance it 100%. There wouldn't be a gap.
Well, it's not only for gap financing. It just makes financial sense if they can spread that investment over a longer amortization period and get the cash flow savings to pay for those investments. So it really just makes financial sense to do.
Mr. Paul, you've done some of these things, or, does this make good business sense to you?
I don't think it's good or bad. It's just another lending source, like Frost or something like that. You go to a bank, and if you go to the ACOG, or if you go to a bank or a lending institution, the only thing that's going to really stand up and help is your credit and your building, your equity, what's inside the equity. And these are things that, and I think Jack Joyce had a very good question. I don't see an interest rate benefit. And I'm not saying it's not bad for somebody that may want to do it. I just don't see why it's necessarily any better than anything that's on the market. You're, you've got investors, you've got these people, and if they don't have the proper creditworthiness or whatever the case may be, they're going to pay a higher interest rate. That's just the way, the nature of the beast. Like, that was my only concern, is I'm not saying it's a bad program. I'm just saying, why should we say, hey, we support this or we're behind it, when we have all the other benefits of the people in the city? And they're, they're not going to come to you just because, they're going to come to whoever they can get the money from to improve their building, whether it be for energy, for water, whatever the case may be, because it's in their best interest. That's just my opinion.
Council, I would like to add that one of the reasons this project is before us right now is because of Mr. Bernanke, with the ensemble, has brought it, asked that we support it. To that point, I don't know why we would not offer something to him at no cost to us. If it can help a business in the city of Castle Hills without any detriment to the city, I don't know why we would hold that against him.
So he can't move forward unless we approve this thing?
I don't know that he can't move forward, but I know that this program was of benefit to him.
Mr. Esben.
So, Mayor, I just echo that sentiment. I mean, this is, there's nothing to be lost by doing this, but there is opportunity to give our business community perhaps a incentive, a motivation to move forward. You look at the numbers that we've seen tonight in terms of the energy efficiency, the water recovery, et cetera, et cetera. There's, you know, what it produces is good, responsible action. So yes, there are many other choices, perhaps, but what's wrong with having one more? And I think that's what we have before us tonight, is the opportunity simply to provide our community with another option, should they choose to pursue it.
Very well put. It's just another economic tool, another option for the community.
Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, before I make a motion, if I could ask Mr. Rappley, we had had a bit of a round-robin discussion one day about possible next meeting dates, and I had articulated that September the 22nd.
Yes, sir.
Was a hard conflict for me. Is there another alternative?
Yes, and I was going to send something out to Council before the end of this week that we found the date of September 23rd, the Wednesday night, 6:30. Yes, and I was going to send something out to council before the end of this week that we found the date of September 23rd, the Wednesday night, 6:30. We had a couple items already on there, and we had to provide public notice on one of those already, which we have. But September 23rd will be the special meeting to address those other items. And if one of those dates works for Mr. Clamp, we can move forward and also invite Mr. Bernacki as well to hear from him.
Absolutely.
Mr. May?
With that, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we adopt Resolution Number 2020-09-08 with the language presented, with the exception of the second, whereas second line, there's an additional D-T-H-E word that should be excised. And that we set the date in the last portion for September 23rd.
At 6:30 PM?
6:30 PM.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Esbren, a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Joyce?
I apologize. One last question for Mr. Clamp. Sir, do you think the program increases the number of building owners who would choose to make their buildings more efficient and more energy conscious than if the program did not exist?
Yes, sir, I do. It really depends on the personal finances of that particular building. If they don't have money to improve, to buy a new HVAC because they can't get a return that quickly on their cash flow, they will, they will hopefully use this, utilize this program so they can amortize it out over a longer period of time and help pay for that. So yes, sir, I do.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes four to one. Thank you, Mr. Clamp.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Okay, let's see here. Next up, we have discussion of possible action on approval to purchase Motorola APX 8000 portable replacement radios for the fire department for a total cost of $88,403.55. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor. I put this on the agenda, and I think as we talked, it probably may have just, probably something we put under consent since the money is adopted in the 2020 budget. The purchase of these radios to replace them have been programmed in the last three budgets, I believe at about $30,000 to acquire these for this year's budget. And so just being transparent and bringing this forward, so Chief can move forward with the code he has of Motorola on the replacement of these radios. Chief is here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. I for one appreciate your transparency. Counsel, do we have any motion?
I'll move that we approve the purchase of the Motorola portable radios as described in item eight.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. May, with the second?
May I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rapley, your chief, what happens with the old radios? Do they get sold? Do we recover any, anything from old equipment?
Yes, sir. They actually go in as a trade-in, so we should be getting equivalent of about $500 per radio that we trade in. That'll go towards the purchase of the new radios.
So the $90,000 is already factoring in the trade-in?
Yes, sir. That's factored in with the trade-in, yes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Mr. Gregory?
These radios are replacing radios we have, correct?
Yes, sir.
Are the radios we have standard for Barre County?
Well, they're outdated. As we change towards being P-25 compliant with the interoperability with other departments and other entities, we've had to upgrade to these new radios, and that will also make it capable for us to continue to upgrade because the current radios that we have right now cannot be upgraded to be the P-25 compliant.
How long do you expect these to last?
To the foreseeable future. Nobody knows what the future is, but what we're being told, these radios come equipped to be upgraded as technology changes to the foreseeable future. As of right now, these are the top of the line radios.
The radios you have now are sufficient for what you do?
The ones that we currently have? No, sir. We do have some troubled areas here in the city. And as they upgrade the antennas and the repeaters to the new complacency, it'll continue to get worse. And again, these radios can't be upgraded. And I think eventually the timeline they're looking is August of next year to require all radios to be P-25 compliant. And at that time, these radios pretty much won't be usable. And that's probably another reason why, as far as trade-in value, we're just getting the $500.
Who sets the compliance?
The Homeland Security and the federal government have set up the P-25 program.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And again, this is something that's been planned for three to four years, and that's why it's been programmed accordingly. So we don't have to pay it all at one time. So that's why it's been about $30,000 in the last three budgets to acquire this because we knew that we'd have to be compliant at some point. And this is the, the year that we have to, and the money's there. And so Chief has, you know, got a good price on these for $88,000 under the $90,000 budgeted.
Okay. That being said, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Chief. Item number nine, discussion of possible action on ordinance 2020-09-08, amending sections 48-105 of Chapter 48 of the Code of Ordinances to declare untreated oak wilt a nuisance, to revise provisions as to treating oak wilt, and to revise the penalty for violations of oak wilt provisions. Mr. Gregory?
Mr. Small crafted this ordinance, I think is a very fine ordinance. It, it has words that I think are correct, timely, for example, any person who discovers or suspects the presence of oak wilt, so on and so forth. I think it's well crafted, well done, and I think it should address the problem of catching oak wilt in its early stages.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Mr. Rapley?
Mayor, I was just going to mention that obviously this is as a result of the last meeting where we discussed oak wilt. And it was directed that the city attorney come back with, you know, provisions and penalties outlining an updated ordinance.
Thank you. Counsel?
By the way, Mayor, if you have any questions, Mr. Fletcher's on the line, and Mr. Schnau will be back soon.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rapley.
Well, before we discuss it, I guess we should have a motion one way or the other.
Yes, sir.
I move that we adopt ordinance 2020-09-08.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Mr. Paul, is that a second?
No.
Okay.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. We have a second discussion. Mr. May?
I'm very interested in this, and I did take the time to look at the canopy area that straddles approximately six city streets over the weekend. And there is no question that oak wilt exists, and that it's killed a number of trees, and that we need to do something. So I just wanted on the record, we need to do something. Now, the question is what? And I think this is a good start. I'm sorry, I did not bring in the actual ordinance, but this has been addressed by Hill Country Village, as well as Hollywood Park, I believe. And one of those two had a 2019 ordinance that had two elements that I liked. It was a more graduated, first time offense, second time offense, third offense. I like the idea of graduated penalties. The second thing I liked is that ordinance created a reservoir of funds that were comprised of fine and comprised of permit. And I learned a lot about oak wilt in research this weekend. And the main thing I learned is that disreparable tree trimmers, if they don't clean their pruning devices, are going to literally bring it into communities where they did not exist. And I suspect that the epicenter of this, when I looked at the literal epicenter, it's a house that is on the San Antonio side of Lock Hill Selma that decided that they would top off their trees several years ago. And I remember making this comment driving down the Lock Hill Selma. That was not a smart thing to do. They literally just killed that tree. Because when you top off a live oak, inevitably you hinder its, its growth, but you also do something else. If you don't do it appropriately, you open it up to oak wilt. So I have a couple of concerns here. One is, if we don't incorporate efforts from San Antonio, we're literally keeping our citizens wide open for this kind of intrusion. And if we don't incentivize our citizens to proactively take care of their stumps, their dead trees, I think we're going to have a problem. There's one, actually two residences where it looks to me like the tree has been dead for some time and just is, is there. And you can see the root structure going to the next adjacent contiguous properties, and you can see the start of oak wilt in those. So I think this is a great start. I applaud you, Councilman Gregory. It's just that I'm a little concerned about incentivizing, and I'm concerned about a graduated sort of penalty.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Paul?
I agree with Mr. May. I remember the conversation a couple of weeks ago. It seems to me like, again, we're in a penalty situation, punitive as opposed to getting the problem solved. It seems that the simplest thing would be to do, we identify the oak wilt. We send them a letter, you give them 10 days to fix it, do something, some type of remediation. If they don't, then the city takes over and does it for them. Several places in this particular ordinance, it talks about once convicted, once convicted, once convicted. So it takes time to go through that whole process, whereas it has been brought forth already and discussed that time is of the essence instead of waiting around. And, you know, I was thinking about this when I was reading this again last night, and not that this makes any difference one way or the other. But it's a real shame because you talked about the, the tree on the San Antonio side, and I agree with that. It's kind of like the water coming down Carolwood. And, but so many people probably get this oak wilt through no fault of theirs, but yet they're stuck with the remediation, with the expense, with all the things. And I just don't like the fact of packing on penalties and graduating penalties. Can't there just be a simple ordinance that says, it's identified, we send them a letter, you got 10 days to fix it, or we get it fixed for you, and then we have to charge you? Just get it done instead of going through all this process. That's just my thoughts on this. It just doesn't, I'm kind of like you, it's a start, but it just doesn't do it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. I have to agree that, I believe that if there's a resident in Castle Hills that has oak wilt, they're likely going to take care of that issue unless they don't have the means. And as Mr. Paul said, the punitive-ness of tacking on a $500 or a $1,000 fee is only separating them from that even further. I just don't see where that makes sense.
Well, the answer to that is, you go down Carolwood, these lots have been infested for months. I disagree with the mayor saying that somebody will take care of it. There are just a lot of people who don't give a damn. And it's those people who allow this thing to migrate through the root system. And you certainly give people plenty of time. It says, "In the event that the owner of a property where oak wilt is confined fails in a timely initiative," that addresses your concerns, Mr. Paul, "all remediated measures recommended by the State Forest Service to control and prevent the spread of oak wilt within seven days or fails to carry out the completion of such remediation." That's a lot of time you got there. That's a lot of time. And I can think of five lots that have this right now, and they haven't done a darn thing about it. And it's been like this for weeks and weeks and weeks. They know those trees in their lot are dead, and they know what they're, they're pretty sure what they're dead from because this isn't the first time it's addressed this street. Now it's wandering across the street and possibly into another lot in an adjacent street. So you have the thing on a timely basis because you have to recognize there are some people who just won't do anything. And then if they say they can't do it, then the city moves in, takes care of it, and addresses the bill to them. Either lean against the house, or they've got to pay it. But this is not something that is simply saying, please, please take care of your problem. This is a serious problem that moves quickly. I mean, quickly. And as I say, it's already jumped the street already, and two other lots now are infected with it. And if we can ask people, please take care of this, and please take care of this, and what we do address it by saying a timely basis. And I think there has to be a penalty, a substantial penalty, if people simply say, we don't want to do it. Especially if it's an inherited house or rent house. And I like the ordinance as it stands. It has to have some teeth to it in order to get a small minority, albeit a small minority, of people to act.
Mr. Gregory, do you know how much it costs to tree to tree?
A lot. You're probably looking at between $1,000 and $3,000 on a tree to remove it, depending upon the size of the tree. So it costs money. No question about it. But I also know how much you are losing in property evaluations if these oak trees are destroyed in Castle Hills. We lose a lot more than just what the homeowner would lose. You lose downgrading of property evaluations. Trees are a big plus for Castle Hills. And if this goes through Castle Hills like wildfire, it's going to look, we won't recognize Castle Hills. And it's moving already.
If they're sending a letter saying you got 10 days to fix it, or tell us how you're going to fix it and fix it, or we'll do it for you, to me, that's pretty accurate, pretty fast.
That's a timely basis. That's what it calls for right here. If you'll read the section that says, "A timely basis."
Yeah, but what, a timely, I read that.
That gives flexibility.
It said timely.
I think that gives flexibility to the homeowner and the city.
See, by your own definition of the problem, we don't want to give flexibility if we have a serious issue. And I guess there's a reason we call it a nuisance. It's a heck of a lot more than a nuisance, and the ordinance calls it a nuisance. Oak wilt's more than a nuisance. So anyway, that's.
Mr. Esbren?
Mayor and Council, I think the one thing that we all certainly agree on without question is that oak wilt is devastating to our community, and we're all very concerned about it. And I applaud Mr. Gregory for bringing this forward to us so that we can have this discussion and determine the best way to approach it. I would, what I heard, I believe, is an anecdotal, people have known for weeks and weeks and weeks, or whatever the case may be. But according to the backup that we have here, and I believe the conversation that took place at our last council meeting, is that the A&amp;M Forest Service didn't give us this determination until August 19th. So I guess my, one of my, my question would be is what action has been taken since then? Because we're past 10 days, whatever, to either see what response we get from the homeowners or if we need to take the, take action ourselves. And then secondly, I would just comment that I applaud Mr. May's suggestion here because I think we all want to, we all want to address this. And while there may be some bad actors, I don't believe we have blocks and blocks of bad actors in the, in the community. And to look at this as a punitive approach first versus taking the remediation that take, that needs to take place, I think has it backwards. So I, I really do think that we are on the cusp of a very good approach to dealing with this. But I would also like to hear, if we can, what has happened since the residents have been notified of it? Are we dealing with blocks of bad actors who are declining to do anything?
Councilman, we have not heard anything just yet. I mean, as we mentioned last meeting, we sent out letters with the map and then information of oak wilt and how to treat it. But we have not heard anything since we sent those letters out after that meeting from that standpoint, so.
So to me, I think part of what I feel here, and this is not meant as a criticism to the city staff, is that rather than looking at perhaps a punitive approach to the homeowners, we should consider a more disciplined approach to how the city approaches it. If those letters have gone. If those letters have gone out and time has passed, the, and we know that oak wilt is there, I think we would all agree that doing nothing isn't the solution here. So perhaps we owe it to ourselves to put some timetable or sequence in place so that we are promptly responding according to the protocol that is established here. And I think that combined with the proposal that Mr. May is making about a graduated approach to dealing with residents might be a very suitable way to accomplish what we really intend to do here.
Mr. Esbrand, I couldn't agree with you more. And we have a great code enforcement officer that's on the streets every day. I think part of that process should include Mr. De La Garza making contact with the homeowner to ensure that they didn't just accidentally toss the letter out with junk mail. I want to make sure that, do we give every chance for people to comply for reasons they might not have? And I think something as simple as implementing Mr. De La Garza, and I'm sure he'd be happy to do that as well. Mr. Gregory, you had a comment?
Two things. These trees have looked this way for months, and the homeowners haven't done a thing. It's not like it took them by surprise. These trees have been in the shape they are for months. I brought it to Mr. Rappley's attention last spring, and I didn't know whether it was oak wilt or whether it was another debilitating disease. Oak wilt, I doubt many people recognize it initially. They rarely recognize it when it kills the tree. I'd like to ask our city attorney, I guess by the, the way this ordinance is written, this gives us the right to go on somebody's property and chop down a tree whether they like it or not, at our convenience. Is that, is that correct?
It gives us the right to, the ability to go on their property and cut down a tree, but only after they're first given the warning that there is the oak wilt and that there's a plan to remediate that. If they fail to remediate, the oak wilt or take any action appropriate under the request from the city, from the arborist or the Forest Service, then, and then, only then can the city go on and do some remediation.
So this is unlike the ordinances we have. If somebody hasn't had the grass cut high enough for the fences falling down, there's a back and forth that goes on for six weeks. We send a letter and they don't respond. We'll send another letter and say, we're going to take you to court, and they don't respond. We send a third letter, and six weeks later, they show up at court saying, we've done it. I'm trying to short circuit that dragging this thing out for a multitude of weeks, this is not like this. This is, is this a, is this a 10-day period of time, or is this a?
So.
I just want to make sure that we don't get bogged down in bureaucracy where we have six weeks before anything happens.
Sure. The, this, I guess it's really the third paragraph on page two, which starts, "In the event the owner of a property where the oak wilt is confirmed fails to timely initiate or remediate, all remediation measures recommended, and to prevent the spread within seven days or fails to carry it out to completion, or fails to have the tree removed, then the city is authorized to go in and treat or take whatever action it needs to take." So it is not a month-long process unless, for some reason, the remediation is a month's long type process. And there may be, from my understanding, there may be a situation which remediation at a certain time of the year may cause more of a spread of this situation than waiting during another period of the year. So we want to have a little bit of flexibility in terms of a hard date that must be removed or remediated.
Mr. Paul, in the penalty, in the penalty phase, would you be more comfortable if you removed from the third line down, remove any person or individual and leave firm, corporation contractor, landscape contractor, tree trimmer, or any other business entity? Removing any person or individual and start with any firm, corporation contractor, et cetera, et cetera. It seems what I hear from the council members, their concern of a homeowner, suddenly this big bill pops up and they don't know what to do.
Well, the homeowner is still responsible for the work of the contractor or lack of inability. Is that right, Mr. The Attorney?
Under the situation where I heard maybe a contractor has done, has their tools infected from another property and they come on to Castle Hills property, I don't know that the homeowner is going to be responsible in that situation. The contractor is going to be there at the direction of the homeowner to take whatever action. Presumably, it will be under the discretion or recommendation of the Forest Service or an arborist.
Well, if we had, if we already had the proper ordinance in place, let's take the example that Mr. Rappley talked about, that we sent letters out and nobody's responding. If we had the proper ordinance in place, there would be no reason why we couldn't go knock on the door and say, folks, what are you going to do? Because I know in the past, when you have people breaking ordinance, the law, and this, whatever, I've been told often that you just can't go and knock on the door and tell them you have to do it by letters and all that, which stretches a process out much longer than it should be. I, you know, like I said, I'm much better, quicker with communications. Just walk to the front door after you send them a letter and say, if, within 10, 10 days, and then go talk to them, but of course, the letter's going to have to be certified, and say, it's going to happen. What are your plans? Because here's what we have to do to get this fixed. It just seems like that just cuts to the chase and gets everything done appropriately in haste and gets it out of the way.
Let me ask a quick question, if I may. I'm sorry, please go ahead, Mr. Fletcher. You were going to answer.
Well, I was just going to mention that, you know, serving the notice is part of the process, and to the extent the code inspector goes out and hand delivers a notice, or it's sent by certified mail, or regular mail, or all three of those ways, the key is to try to get notice to that property owner, to the extent they're there, and get compliance. Also, we want to keep in mind that there's some prosecutorial discretion. While someone may violate a code, you may give them one ticket to put them on notice and send a warning and ask them to take care of it. And if they fail to do so, and six months later, then you have the ability to say, well, if you're not going to follow the law, we'll give you a ticket every day that you don't follow the law. And then hopefully that may incentivize them to take the appropriate action.
But that defeats the purpose, getting to it in a hurry.
So I think what we're all saying here is that we need to have a timeline.
Right.
For the process.
And a short timeline in an ordinance, will that be lawful? That's where I'm going.
Yeah, I guess that's the question, Mr. Fletcher. If we have a condensed timeline because of the urgency, what are our parameters and our abilities there?
Well, we have seven days as the general timeline here unless the notice says that they may need to take more time. We can have a short timeline because it's a public health, safety type issue. And frankly, if there's a violation of the ordinance, once the ordinance is passed, people are going to be on notice that this condition should not exist. Whether or not they're aware that they have oak wilt is, is another situation. But once we tell them, then they'll need to take action within a timely manner. So I'm not, I don't know that there's terrible concern about, is seven days enough? I think it's kind of a case-by-case analysis to determine whether or not you think that's, that's appropriate for the particular situation.
Well, if you give them 10 days to give you a plan and go talk to them and say, what are we going to do about this? It needs to be taken care of. The ordinance says it needs to be taken care of. I mean, we can't be, if we're going to try to protect the city, which we all want to do, what's the best way that the city can protect the city and the other residents in the fastest and most expedient? And I just don't think tacking on fees and tacking on penalties necessarily will do the job if they haven't done it yet, number one. Number two, that's not what we're looking for. We're looking to solve the problem.
My question for Mr. Fletcher is, if we pass this ordinance this evening or at some point in the near future, will it apply to those homes who have already been notified? Or will they be taken care of under the existing ordinance?
This ordinance will become effective upon adoption primarily. So if you wanted it to apply, you'd give them a new notice, and then it could be effective on them in particular. Otherwise, the notice, the law enforced at the time they received the notice is what would be applicable.
Mr. Mayor, one final observation the council should keep in mind. I've sat up here for years and heard nothing but complaints about how the city is wide open on the weekend, and people swarm in the city without, without permit ordinance, without permission to cut trees and do this, that, and the other, and they leave. Property owners either may not realize they have to get a permit, but the city is abused by these people who come into the city, and they couldn't care less about oak wilt, and they cause this stuff to leap over the street from Lock Hill, Sima. That's how it actually came over from Lock Hill, Sima, in one direction, I was told by the owner, he's now, Dick and his wife are dead. But if you, if you don't have anything that homeowners are not proactive, they're going to continue to have people chop their trees during the weekend with no permit, they may not even put any blackened stuff on the, on the saw, and will continue to go on the way we have right now.
I believe you're absolutely correct, and that's why Mr. Rappley's coming up with a plan. We need to notify, communication is the best thing in the world. I've run into people cutting trees. I ran into somebody that called me, and they said, can they cut trees on the weekend, on Sunday? This is after the fact. I said, no. And they're doing things, in my opinion, some of them are trying to get away with, but I think a lot of it is just lack of information. They aren't going to the website. We're not, we're not leading them to the trough, if you will, not that we should have to, but Mr. Rappley has an idea on how to solve that issue. But we need to notify them where to go, what to do, how to see it. And I've stopped three or four different people already in the last six months about trimming their trees out of time, and they shouldn't be doing. And then this last time I'm talking about, one guy was there, he was a contractor. I think we ought to have a contractors list that when they do a permit, see, we aren't staffed, we're small, but somebody, we need a quality control. We need a follow-up. What did they do? When did they do it? And how'd they do it? We need, we need a follow-up. Somebody needs to follow up and say, I don't know how many permits we have to cut trees or anything else, but let's go behind them and follow up. Let's just don't give permits and let it go away in the dark and forget about it, because that's what's happening. And anyway.
So it, real quick, Councilman Paul and Councilman Joyce asked Mr. Fletcher, again, we, you know, we'd have to re-notify, you know, because again, there's no statutory language, as I said, to put a timeline and mandate them to do this work from that standpoint. We do, our new, new code officer, Mr. De La Garza, we do rotate him on Saturdays now to be out and about.
But not Sundays. And I'm not asking it to be done, I'm just saying, but not Sundays.
And not Sundays. But again, if you, if you cut oak trees, you're supposed to call the office and let us know that you've painted the wounds, and the code officer goes out and checks it, as Louie can testify to that standpoint.
I'm going to put the onus, unfortunately, on my good friend, the chief, Siemens, especially on Sundays when our officers are riding around. If they see, if they see a contractor, truck out there working, I'm not asking to be engaged, that's not their job, but they can sure write it down and report it, and we can follow up on the permit and things of that nature. What do you think, sir? Just rub your head to the.
Sir, we've implemented that last year where our officers are identifying. We're not taking enforcement measures, nor does council or citizens want the police enforcing grass and tree ordinances. It's, it's a bad look, in my personal opinion. When I go home and I'm a, and I'm a citizen of my neighborhood, I don't want them telling me how to mow my lawn or when to do it. Let the code enforcement keep them spifercated. That said, we added exactly that program last year. Louie will tell you that we are, when it, when it becomes obvious and we're not engaged in something else, we notify dispatch, and then Louie in his office will pull those reports, and we've coded them a certain way that they will get just the reports of violations that we observed, when we observed them, the addresses, and then they can take some measures immediately following that next business day. So that's been implemented, but, but I, I think it was a great idea, just, we, we thought of it sooner, so.
I wouldn't hear.
But we'll take any other advice or any other suggestions that folks, that council might have.
Mr. Esbrand?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd just say again that I, I think the, the issue here in terms of addressing the situation is, once we know that communication has gone out to the homeowners, there should be some kind of follow-up. And it, in my business, we wouldn't go, well, no one has called in, so everything must be okay. It's like, if you have an issue, you go out and you follow up on it. And I think that that's, again, a part of this, that we can put a good ordinance together that addresses where appropriate a firmness of resolve and making sure that the homeowner understands the seriousness of it, but also the expectation of the city that recognizing the impact of something like this, that it, that we are taking the appropriate follow-up action ourselves to ensure a speedy remediation to it.
Mr. Rappley, can you and our city attorney so devise, in addition to this ordinance, to address the timeliness factor that apparently most of the council is concerned about?
I believe so.
Regular schedule that is.
Obviously, I would talk, talk to Mr. Schnorr or Mr. Fletcher on this and figure out what might be the appropriate timeline. Again, like anything else that we send out through, say, code compliance for a citation, you know, our code officer will be following up on those things. And in this case, if we've sent out a proper notice to notify a resident of oak wilt, that could be a follow-up in a certain amount of days by our code officer to make sure there's either a plan in place or they've, they've essentially complied.
Mr. Rappley, I share Mr. Gregory's urgency for this. Would it be possible to do that by the next council meeting, next Tuesday?
I think so.
If, if I could just ask for a little clarity on the request, as it is proposed, the city's going to have to follow up to determine whether or not the property owner has complied with the initial notice of violation. There's a notice, you have oak wilt, you need to remedy it within seven days. So does the council wish to specify a longer period or add a provision that requires the council to, or the code inspector to appear and make another inspection? And I'm specifically referring to the third paragraph. I don't know if it's posted.
Paul, would it be reasonable, Chief Siemens here, would it be reasonable to, I know with this, only the honest abide by the rules, but would it be reasonable to ask in that letter to have the owner respond to the city with what remediation activity or what action they took in, in whatever timeline you decide on? I think most folks would reasonably comply with it, certainly a bigger net than we're throwing now.
So I think what's going to happen is the Forest Service is going to tell them, you either need to put some, some pesticides down, remove the tree, or take some specific action when they receive the notice and the request for remediation or removal of the tree. Then the code inspector or the follow-up will be, within that time, did they take that action? If they fail to take that action, that's when the city's authorized to issue a penalty or potentially take the action and do the remediation themselves.
And I would suggest, like most of our code compliance violations, we give 10 days to comply. And then is when our code officer follows up and see if compliance has been done.
Mr. Rappley, even though it's not in the current ordinance, even though we sent the letters out, I would still have Mr. De La Garza go by and, and that, talk to those people and ask them, you know, did you receive the letter? We have an issue here. What were your plans? And, you know, it's not an authoritative situation at this point, but it's still informative, I think. I would certainly do that.
Okay.
That's my suggestion, anyway.
Mr. May?
I just wanted to add, I, I think we all are speaking the same language. We want to move forward. And I would just boldly propose that we look at other legislation with our sister municipalities. I can forward them to Mr. Rappley so we don't create any kind of quorum issues, and we can kind of pick and choose, snip here, snip there, because I am concerned about the penalty aspect of this, but I'm also thinking, hey, if we're going to do legislation, let's do it right and reach for the stars here, because I know the first response is probably going to be, hey, I, I got a big expense, and then what's my yard going to look like? There's going to be nothing here. I will personally commit, I want, I want this on the record, I will personally commit to raise funds to plant trees that would appropriately compensate for the lack of what is an ill tree. The other thing we haven't. Uh the other thing we haven't discussed is that there are certain varieties of oak that are equally subject to wilt, including red oak. So that may be another informational uh exercise that we can conduct for the benefit of our community. Hey, here are some alternatives that would look good and be healthy.
Red oaks are already trees that you cannot plant in Castle Hills. That ordinance was passed several years ago. In the past, the city, and I'm going back about 10 or 12 years, the city has said, we will help people buy if their trees are infected and they are still treatable, we will buy the chemicals at cost and let them buy it from us at cost, saving them the sales tax. Some did it, most didn't. Um I'll leave it, I, I brought the problem to the council. I think a hammer is needed, especially to businesses and people who have these fly-by-night tree trimmers who come in and do the infection. We have an infection now. It is quickly spreading on at least one and perhaps two streets. It's crossed one street already in the last six weeks. If the council chooses to uh come up with something better in a month or two months or next week, I'll leave that for the council to uh discuss. I believe this has to be done now. You can always amend it uh later on to the benefit of whomever. Uh but I believe the problem is now, we can discuss it next week if you want to. And it, it's gonna be up to the council. Uh I think this is, this was done by Mr. Schnall, which he did get snippets from our sister cities. And that's how he came up with a lot of this. And I think it looks very good as it stands. But the rest of the council feels differently. I would, we can change it now. You want a timeline, the council can propose adding a timeline to this if they sort of desire.
Mr. Fletcher, um taken upon Mr. Gregory's suggestion, had if we prove this tonight, is it really that big an issue then? What does it look like if all of a sudden next council meeting, we change it? I don't know that the week's gonna make that big a difference personally.
Uh if you adopt it tonight and it becomes effective and you issue a notice to any citizen or property owner or corporation, then this rule would apply in that situation. If you're, and if you amend it um at a later date, you certainly have the authority to do that.
I just don't like all these penalties and fines and things until we give the people the opportunity.
From, from Councilman Paul's perspective, in the letters we sent out, we did put Mr. Delagarsa or a code officer as the point of contact to follow up with. And from, from anything related to code compliance in this, I would ask if Mr. Zemroon has any points uh which you like to have. Uh because he's been involved in um, you know, tracking down contractors and, you know, ones that don't have tree permits and one that don't follow what they're supposed to do. Go ahead, Mr. Emerald.
Thank you, appreciate the time. Uh gentlemen, I do have a little bit of insight on the operational side of code compliance.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
While you're there, does it hurt if you take the mask down? Nobody's around you. We can hear you better if that's okay with everybody.
Better now?
Yeah.
Sure. I just kind of want to give you a little bit of insight on the operational side of code compliance. I've been doing it for seven years and now I'm Mr. Delagarsa's supervisor. And there are certain things that have been discussed here that are just phenomenal as far as timeline goes. We have to have a timeline. I think Mr. Fletcher uh would agree with me that uh you have to have that do, you have to have that culpable knowledge delivered to the, the violator. Uh generally speaking, for the code, for code uh violations, we have 10 days. And that's just standard across the board, whatever it is, it's 10 days you have, you have to fix whatever problem it is. In the case of swimming pools, for instance, illicit discharges, when before the code was rewritten and it kind of became impossible to do what I'm gonna say now, we put the honest of proof onto the owner. On the 10-day letter that I sent to people, and we're talking about five years ago, I said, listen, you had an illegal discharge into the MS4 that may or may not have contained a chlorine level acceptable to the code. You need to now show proof that the chlorine level was XYZ. So there is some, and Mr. Fletcher can correct me if I'm wrong, but there is some precedence into putting the honest of proof onto the owner, which is basically what the letters that were sent out just recently. In, in the instance case with the oak, oak wilt situation, uh I crafted the letter that said at the bottom of it, you have, there was no specific date or, or timeframe, but there was uh a duty for the property owner to produce proof to Mr. Delagarsa. There's a little bit of a catch 22 in that, in that, and once again, Mr. Fletcher can correct me if I'm wrong or add to my comments or subtract for them. But Mr. Delagarsa is not an arborist, nor is he with the Forest Service. So what he's going to basically do is be a collector and disseminator of information. When the homeowner says, I've taken care of it, well, I've taken care of it, well, I've injected this into the root. Mr. Delagarsa's duty is literally, okay, let me go report that to the state to see if that's acceptable, if that's what they wanted. Each case is different, as Mr. Gregory's pointed out, these cases individual. And sometimes you have to have a full removal, sometimes you have to do mitigation of the wounded area or injection to the root system. So it's, it's, it's a moving target. And I would just simply just in, interject if I could, that first of all, the 10-day is probably something that would work, especially if it's that concrete proof needs to be submitted after that particular point. And that that proof be channeled up the chain, if you will, uh to the state forestry service so that it is something that is acceptable and will stop the situation in that particular unique position or situation. Operationally, it's a little difficult for the code officer to go out there and be judge, jury and executioner from the standpoint of the citizens and also of the attorney. Because the attorney ultimately is gonna be the one that's gonna be trying to case on what, on what facts we found as code officers. Uh and if there's gonna be an arbitrary finding of fact, it's gonna be a lot difficult to go all the way to litigation if it needs to.
Are you sending their current codes on the books that already mandate a time schedule for items such as this?
An item such as this, no, so there is no.
Generally speaking, uh various items, not exactly like this, but is there a general, in the code, a general timeframe set up? And is it usually 10 days?
There's no statutory language that says 10 days. We go by best practices and we take our cues from the courts and we also take our cues from state training. We go through the TEACs training through Texas A&amp;M and their instructors are the ones that tell us that the standard for the state of Texas is 10 days. And once again, Mr. Fletcher can vouch for this, that 10 days is the time to respond for, to certify the letter. Uh it's pretty standard with the courts. I, I kind of conferred with Tina seven years ago when I started uh kind of getting this program going. That 10 days was, was the accepted amount of time. And to answer your question directly, there's nothing codified in the, in the statute that specifically says 10 days, just basically standard.
Ms. Hopkey, you had a comment?
And I'll take my mask off so that y'all can hear me. Um my Bonnie Hopkey, 111 Amerson, luckily I don't have oak wilt in my large oak trees in my front yard. But I had, I guess, two comments. One, we talk about a letter and I know in the past, I don't remember exactly what I got a fly, um something hung on my doorknob that said, you have this problem, you need to fix it. So I'm not waiting and I got a letter later. So I wasn't waiting for the letter. I already knew that as soon as that code compliance person came by, that there was a problem and I had to take care of it. I don't know if that is something that is being done or if you're just sending out the letter. And we all know the mail issue these days that, you know, at some point in time, it might be two months from now, the person's gonna get the certified mail. And again, like Mr. Paul said, it's too late. So that was my first comment. My second comment is, or my second question is, and, and this, and I'm, I apologize, I did not read through it. So these are more questions that I raise um sort of sitting out here and listening. Uh Mr. Isbrand, you said that we got noticed that it was oak wilt in something in August. So my next question is, how does someone know? Like, is the city sending out someone from Texas A&amp;M to say, yes, this is oak wilt? And if that is the case, then wouldn't the arborist also say, this is what needs to happen with this tree? He's, he's certified, that's his job, and that could be put into the letter or into the notice that says, okay, the arborist said you need, all you need to do is put this kind of insecticide down and blah, 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 so that your code inspector doesn't have to say, well, I don't know if that's enough. But that's the arborist's job is to say, here's what needs to happen with this tree. But I also agree with Mr. Paul that at some point in time, if the person just continues to ignore, the city has to do something. And to go out, and even if that is in the very first letter that says, listen, here's your timeframe, here's what you're needed, here's what the arborist says needs to be done. You have to prove to us that you have done it in X timeframe. And if you have not, then we are gonna come in, we're gonna do it, you're gonna be fined again, you're gonna be fined and you're also gonna have to pay whatever it is, whatever it costs to actually take that action. And we're gonna, as a city, we would take the same action that we would ask or that the arborist says needs to be taken. So those are my however many comments that I had. Um and again, I apologize, I did not read what was in the statement. I mean, I remember when Matt Doggett was on council, that sort of, there was the first time, sort of the whole put a ordinance in place um kind of came up and the whole oak wilt, and it was in The Reporter. There were articles, there's articles in The Reporter all the time. You know, so, you know, I, and I know that he did, or somebody did, or brought somebody in to even do sessions like public information sessions to present to people about the different things related to oak wilt. And it might be a good idea that it's something that we just do on a regular basis. I mean, you could pull out probably that old article and rerun it again or something, but those are my comments. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel, the one, my, here's my biggest worry.
Mr. Gregory, give me one second, we have this lady's gonna come up.
My name is Yvette Ramirez and I live in Castle Hills on the front of Garden View. And um I understand, I, I have a beautiful oak tree, I would hate for it to die from oak wilt. But I understand there's certain months that you aren't even allowed to touch the oak tree. So if someone has oak wilt, will they have to wait several months before they can even do anything to it? And are we just defeating the purpose of the 10-day time limit um in order to get that remediated or fixed? I'm not really sure if that would help. Um the other thing is, in the 20 years that I've lived here, I don't even know what oak wilt looks like. I, all I know, if my tree starts to die, it's obviously there's something wrong with it. I'm not educated enough on the oak wilt situation. I do know that um it, once it starts, it will continue on. But there are several people on the weekends that come, drive by, cut down trees, cut down branches. I notice they don't spray any black spray on them to cover the, uh, the, the cut itself. I understand that even owners are able to cut their own trees down uh without having to pull a permit. So maybe I'm wrong, but as a resident here, that's what we've always been told. Look, you can cut down the tree as long as you cut it down and you don't hire a company to do it. So if people don't know that they're supposed to be spraying the cut as, if it's an oak, then how do we educate them to, to let them know that there could be a potential problem and a major cost? And there's a lot of people that, and this, these trees that you're saying that are already dead, financially, I mean, you're talking thousands of dollars uh just to have that remediated or removed. And it's, it's a, you know, right now, the financial situation for most people is let it fall over or, you know, find me or do whatever they have to do because financially, they're not gonna be able to afford somebody walking up to their home and removing a tree. So I think that, you know, I understand it's very important that we have to have these trees uh fixed uh so that we don't lose all the beautiful trees. That's why I moved to Castle Hills, because the beautiful trees that were in Castle Hills. But I think there's also has to be, it can't be just a fine, fine, fine uh that the own, homeowners. Uh I think we have to find something that we can all work together on and, and definitely notify the owners, educate the owners of oak wilt is and how it starts.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. And Mr. Rappley can correct me if I'm wrong, but uh the whole intent behind the permit, the tree permit is education to let them know as much as we know and pass that along to the owners. And it's my understanding that the tree permits are free if you're cutting the tree yourself and you only pay if it's a business. So the idea they come in and get the permit is just so we can tell you, don't cut during this time, take care of this, paint the wounds, et cetera. Mr. Gregory, you had a point?
We, we, Mayor, we won't issue those permits during that period, so from the city's standpoint.
Unless it's an emergency, correct?
Unless it's an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley.
Tree's about to fall on someone's property, those kinds of sets, those kinds of situations.
Mr. Gregory.
I appreciate the council's concerns. Uh we have the ability right now to rectify those concerns that we so desire. My real, my, one of my bigger concerns is, this is already starting to have a destructive view on at least two streets here. What if this was in the densely oakwood, oak area of the city where people have large and deep lots and they have oak wilt on it and they don't know it or they don't take the time to know it? And you start, and it starts marching through Fox Hall or Amerson where Ms. Hopkey, she had a lot of good suggestions, by the way. The council right now can be proactive and strike whatever they want to strike, add whatever they want to add in terms of a timeline or they do not like the punitive measures. Or we can pass this and come back next week, next October and add things to it. But the one thing we, we can, this does go back at least 12 years. This problem goes back at least 12 years when it hit Prins and it started to come down that street. Uh I encourage the, the council to change this as they feel is needed right now. Or to pass it as it is right now and add amendments to it as we come along next week, next month, next year. There are a lot of problems in terms of, of uh, not everybody is going to be a good neighbor. And you have, you have to just accept that. There are people who can't afford to do it, that's why the city would go in and take it, take the problem in hand. And I understand that and, and believe me, I'm glad I don't have a lot of these oak, I have no oaks on my yard. I took them out uh some time ago. I leave it to the council for whatever they want to do.
Mr. Joyce.
Well, I'll move based on Mr. Gregory's suggestion that we um not try to fix it in hand here this evening and turn it over to Mr. Rappley and his team based on the comments tonight and either take a week or maybe, a week sounds kind of ambitious to me to, to get this done, because there's a, a lot of good ideas. Ms. Hopkey had some good ideas, there's been a lot of good ideas passed around. So I, I don't know that all of those could be captured in a week. And Mr. May has got a couple of uh go-bys for us to look at, so let's, it sounds to me like more than a one-week project. So I would move that we, we defer discussion of this and ask Mr. Rappley to update it based on all of these comments. And furthermore, though, based on Mr. Gregory's sense of urgency, I would ask that Mr. Rappley and his team, with all urgency, pursue those property owners that they've already contacted and just use whatever power the city has to get them to take action.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
Mr. Mayor, uh point of order, we have a motion and a second on the floor first.
I'm sorry, yes, we do. Okay, uh so we'll vote on the original motion as proposed by Mr. Gregory. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion fails. Do we have a new motion? Mr. Joyce, I won't make you repeat that uh. And we can put a.
You know, you are right.
Quotes there, thank you, sir. Uh do we have a second for Mr. Joyce's motion? Second by Mr. May. Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Uh item number 10, discussion and possible action on the extension of the sixth declaration of local state of disaster and public health emergency executed by Mayor J.R. Trevino on July 16th, 2020. Uh I think we've all grown accustomed to seeing these here, unfortunately. Uh at this point, it's still a, a clerical issue for us to continue to. At this point, it's still a clerical issue for us to continue to confirm that we're still in the state of disaster. As you all know, the, the governor has signed his extension as well, I believe it was yesterday. This is before y'all. I don't entertain any motions. Mr. Isren?
Mayor, I'd move approval of extension of the Sixth Declaration of a Local State of Disaster and Public Health Emergency executed by Mayor Trevino on July 16, 2020, until our next regularly scheduled meeting in October.
Thank you, Mr. Isren. Second by Mr. Paul. Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Update and discussion on Parks and Projects Commission activities and request direction from City Council for future efforts slash projects. Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, folks, the Parks and Projects Commission has been hard at it for quite some time now. And so we thought it best to invite Ms. Hopkey, who is the current chair, to give you an update on what we've been doing, she's prepared a really nice PowerPoint presentation. And we would certainly entertain your comments and questions, but perhaps more than anything else, any direction y'all would like us to take. So if I may, Bonnie, please.
Thank you. Thank you, and unfortunately, I got Ryan's email to send him the PowerPoint when I sent him the PDF, too late to actually do it. So he's going to advance through the slides, but I saw him hand out the presentation. So again, I'm Bonnie Hopkey, I live at 111 Amerson. I am the current chair of the Parks and Projects Commission. Ryan, you want to go to the next one? Just as a recall, we were, we started out as a parks commission and an ad hoc project committee. Same people were on both. We were kind of starting to overlap into each other, and we, there were no longer any lines separating the two groups. So we went ahead, or the, the commission was established when we were combined back, and the ordinance was done on May the 1st in 2020. Next, please. Here is, the commission consists of five members appointed by each chair, and then an alternate that's appointed by the mayor. And then one alderman approved by council to serve as our liaison. And our members now, I'm the, the chair out of Place 3, John Squire is the co-chair, Ray Schultz, Skip McCormick. We had someone in Place 5 that resigned last month for personal reasons. And then Rick Lopez as the alternate, and Jack is our council liaison. So I just wanted to run through quickly some of the things that we were looking at. So our first job was to do a parks inventory and a parks plan. And that was started when the parks commission existed on its own. And that plan was approved by the new commission. The plan and the inventory was approved by the new commission on June the 20th, 2020, and that was sent to council. And that essentially looked at the inventory of property within the city that could be used for park space, and then just some general goals of what we should look at for parks. And that was like, it would be nice if we had a park within X, you know, blocks from residential areas, or parks within an X amount of space. So a lot of that was, you know, high hopes, but we did get it, and it was sent to council back in June. Next, Ryan. The second one, again, most of these were started, all of these, well, I shouldn't say all. Most of these were started back when we were two separate groups, and now that we've combined. So the second one was to open the playgrounds at Castle Hills and Jackson Keller Elementary School. And there was a lot of discussion, Ryan and Bernard Judamarder met with the N E I S D folks. They agreed to open the playgrounds, especially the one here at, right across the street at Castle Hills, but they wanted signage. So the signs were funded for Castle Hills. There was no money in the budget to do signage for Jackson Keller. But with school now being closed and all of that, none of the signs have been installed, and we probably won't get anything installed until everybody is, you know, sort of, everything is back, playgrounds are open again, and can be used. Big thing with Jackson Keller, I know that the principal there had some concerns, given her location, that she had some graffiti and other things that were happening over there, and she was not, you know, she was not thrilled. You know, she wasn't jumping up and down to open up the playground area there. But you still see people kind of crawling, since that's over where I live. They crawl under the fences anyway, and play basketball or whatever. So I think we can get past that with further discussion. I mean, it seems like the superintendent is willing to do that, but again, there's no money for the signs. So I don't know how much the signs cost or anything else. And he will not open up any of the gates until the signs are in place. Next, please. The third initiative is what we call our signs and branding. And Alderman Isren has been working with that subcommittee to create our identity for Castle Hills. And if you look, we have the little oak tree up at the top. But some of the ideas that we discussed are the consistency and formalization of the logo, the design and color scheme for streets, monuments at the entrances, inconsistent monuments. If you look, the monument that's on Jackson Keller is different from what you'll see someplace else. And all of them are different from the sign out here on the Commons. When I was over here the other day, I looked, and I said, that doesn't match anything. And actually, Sherri French has already gone through to clean up some of those monuments to make them look better and stand out further. And then the water tower, the logo on the water tower, when it gets replanted right across the street here. And then we talked about signage, looking at signage on the overpasses of 410. Right now, the subcommittees have met with Mr. Isren. Things are a little bit on hold while we wait for a master plan and a vision. And my understanding, we'd like to try to get something when the water tower does get repainted, probably next year, is that correct, Ryan? And there's been some communication with SAWs about what was going to be painted onto that water tower when it does get repainted. But we'd like to be able to, we as a, as a commission would like to be able to roll out whatever our logo's going to be, or whatever, such that that's what goes on that sign, and then we can have it consistently used throughout the rest of the city. Next. Linear parks. Jack has been talking about linear parks and trying to get, you know, better use of some of the linear space that we have. So some of the things, and we've had a couple presentations from different people to come in to talk about linear parks. And some of the ideas that we talked about was bike lanes along Northwest Military, as far as we can go, that would maybe tie into the city of San Antonio to go all the way over to Harburger Park. Some greenways maybe in the alleys, clean up the alleys, though everybody seems to think that the alley space is that part of their property, which it's not. You know, there's the drainage ditch behind the Commons, there's the drainage ditch behind HEB. You know, create a relationship with the railroad to create a walking trail, maybe in the right-of-way of the railroad. So those are some of the things that were, we've kind of talked about, ideas that have been thrown out. We're going to continue to gather information and, you know, talk about other open spaces that might be used as park space. I mean, we were even talking about some of the smaller lots just being dog parks. I mean, we don't need a big space, but just a place that fenced, somebody can bring their dogs, and, you know, it's an open space to run. Next, please. And this is a map, Ray Schultz is, he's our GIS whiz within the city. It was what he did when he was with the Army Corps of Engineers. So he created this map that shows sort of the current channels and right-of-ways, and a pedestrian, a potential pedestrian walkway that could be considered as part of this. Next, Ryan. The next one is the consolidation of the city plans. And this one was something new when the commission started, that Mr. Joyce established a subcommittee to review and consolidate the plans that have been developed for the city since 2000. And there were a lot of plans developed, and a lot of people, I've, both Jack and I have heard from people that said, well, we did this plan and such and such a date, and it's just sitting on a shelf someplace. So Jack is taking the initiative to get those off of whatever shelf that they're sitting on, kind of pull some of the best ideas out of all of them, consolidate them into a single plan, and then kind of do an analysis, you know, the commission analysis, some community input, and, you know, see what pieces and parts of all those different plans we could maybe implement in the, in the coming months. I know the branding, the one of them that's up there is the Texas A&amp;M study. And branding was something that was in that study to begin with, that we needed our own brand, we needed our own identity outside of San Antonio, that we're surrounded by San Antonio, but we all know we're a separate city, but there are a lot of people that don't. And so that was one of their recommendations. And then, you know, taking to, like I said, you can see the walkability plan and the most recent unpublished yet master plan. So Jack and his committee are still kind of working through that process, pulling it all together, and then we'll bring it back to council. Next. The consolidation of, oh, this is the, sort of, some of the ideas that have come up as part of that. We talked already about the pedestrian and bike lanes, crosswalks along Northwest Military, pedestrian bike markings on streets without sidewalks. I mean, we're not going to put sidewalks all across the city. Where I live, there are no sidewalks. I walk my dogs in the morning in the dark, and, you know, luckily, I have flashing lights on me. Anybody can see me, but if there was even markings on the street that said, you know, walk here, bike here, or whatever. I understand there was some zoning committee was going to talk about doing some lot sizes and do almost a map of different size lots in different parts of the city. That's something that we can help with. The Castle Hills Business Alliance and Roundtable. And then the other thing that we've talked about is kind of the development of plans and a capital improvement plan for all the city-owned facilities. So this building, the fire department, Public Works, the Commons, the property over on Persimmons. Alderman Joyce and Alderman May have been working on the Business Alliance Roundtable, and I understand the first meeting is scheduled for September 18th at 7:30 a.m. Thank you, gentlemen. Next. And then our last thing, I believe this is the last thing, I may have gotten my numbering wrong, is our vision for the Commons. And this is something that we've really been working on probably for the last six months. And we've worked with a parks consultant to develop a vision for improvements to the Commons and then the city-owned property on Persimmons to make it more friend, community-friendly and a place that people could actually gather. So we've talked about playgrounds and splash pads, and a multi-use court, and exercise stations, boardwalk that would take you from the Commons to the property at Persimmon, shade canopies over the walkways, a movable stage, the water fountain, which, the next one, Castle Hills Women's Club did purchase and donate the water fountain that's being installed right now. Fencing along Lemonwood to keep the kids from just running out and darting across the street. Not high fencing, but just something that's going to stop them and make them think twice before they run after the ball across the street. Even redoing, we had a discussion about redoing the walking path into something that was more walker-friendly, better on your feet when you're walking on it than just walking on the concrete that's out there. And a lot of it is, you know, some of, there's rubber things that are used now in playgrounds that can be used to resurface the, the walkway we have currently that is just, like I say, they use it in, in the playgrounds for children, so you know that it's going to feel nice on your feet when you walk, and, and maybe encourage more exercise. Next slide. So this is a, one of the conceptual pictures. So right now, what we're doing is preparing options for phasing some of the proposed improvements. That, we have a subcommittee that's working through the, some of those to say, okay, like, if we, like, what are the, what's our first priority, what's our second priority, what's our third priority, what's our fourth priority, and getting some of these things done. Obviously, we're going to need some funding sources for some of the things that we're looking at. And we also want to get some community input on some of these ideas. But, but we don't want to just throw everything out there and say, what do y'all think? And, and so that's kind of the phasing, which the subcommittee will take to the full committee, and then we'll look at ways to get, you know, sort of what the next steps. But one of the things that I wanted to emphasize is, I think we're looking at this as part of the bigger plan for all the property that the city owns. It's not going to be done in a vacuum. I've had somebody tell me, well, you're putting the cart before the horse. And my opinion is, there is no court right, cart right now, and there is no horse. But there will never be a cart or a horse unless somebody starts to do something. And I want our commission, my goal for our commission is to start doing something with the Commons and the property on Persimmon, being a, a way to improve some of the amenities that the city offers to the citizens. Last slide, please. So we look forward, if there are things that you would like our commission to look for, we look forward to the direction and input of the council. We also value and hope for community involvement and input, because our goal is to make improvements to our city that's going to benefit all residents. And that concludes my presentation. So if you have any questions, I can stay up here, or Jack can answer them, whatever.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkey. We appreciate all the work that you and the commission have done so far. Counsel, do we have any questions, comments?
I have one.
Mr. Paul?
First of all, thank you for the work, Bonnie. I know what Jack and Skip and everybody on there has done has been basically a labor of love. John reminds me often. Mr. Rapley, Bonnie, whomever, we really need to get on this, addressing our lot sizes for the different areas. There's nothing to keep, stop things from continuing to happen. Now, what am I saying? For the entire city, whether it be the estates, whether it be the terrace, whether it be Fox Hall, 14,000 square feet's minimum. We ran through this earlier on one replat. Potential of other issues now, and we've asked for that to be done. So I hope that we can be moving forward on that as quickly as possible. To my knowledge, there's nothing on the table now. And it would be good to, that would be a simple one that could be done by itself, because you got four or five areas, and we know what the general lot sizes are in those different areas. Thank you.
Mr. Paul, the, the mayor had asked for that, for zoning to look into that, and it's going to be discussed at the October 6 meeting. Hopefully, a recommendation from zoning will be presented next month to council.
Mr. Paul, along the same wavelength, I attended the Parks Commission meeting this Saturday, I believe. Mr. Joyce, was it? My, Wednesday, well, I was way off. I was there, though, I was there. And I, I did ask Mr. Joyce and the commission to give a little bit of light, or shine some light on that topic specifically, and to craft it into a way that we can put districts to the different parts of Castle Hills and formally adopt the names that have been assigned as nicknames. and formally adopt the names that have been assigned as nicknamed as of right now. It's already on his radar to surmise that. If there's no further comments, Ms. Joyce.
Let me, if I, if I may, just thank Ms. Hopkey for putting together a really nice presentation. I appreciate that, Bonnie. Thank you. And then, gentlemen, with respect to this committee, this comprehensive plan committee, there is a need that we have that maybe y'all can help make some suggestions. It would be really great if we had a commercial real estate person with us as we work through some of these land use issues and other things. Unfortunately, we don't have one, but if you have any suggestions, please just shoot me an email or whatever. So that's it. And we look forward to working on this thing. It's a very exciting time, I think, for our city. And my own vision, speaking of this, with Bonnie mentioned the branding holding up a little bit for the vision, I see the vision for our city as the very first step in any sort of plan that we're going to do. You know, an aspirational statement, who do we want to be when we grow up? You know, 10, 20 years, whatever the planning horizon is. And so we really want to attack that first so it can inform the branding conversation and it can form the planning conversation as well. It's just that the doggone COVID thing makes it difficult to do these kinds of things. I mean, these are things that lend themselves to workshops where we're all together and we're putting stuff on the wall and discussing things and talking about things. But we're going to have to come up with a new way to do that, probably surveys and perhaps sending out things through the mail to give folks a sense of what we have in mind. But anyway, we'll figure out a way to do it. But anyway, we appreciate your all's support and we'll, we'll keep hammering away.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Item number 12, discussion of possible action on one appointment to the Parks and Projects Commission. Mr. Gregory.
I've asked Mr. Bernard Judemire, who has been on this committee before, if he'd like to return. He says yes, he's the person I'm recommending. He is very much a family man. He just had his, he and his wife just had their fourth child. And I think we should have somebody on this committee who will use some of these things that we're going to be proposing. I mean, he definitely fits the, the focus of what we're looking for, young families with children. What do they want? And I think he is a very able individual and he is who I hope we put back on there. I don't think this requires a vote, but he's my appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Proceeding on to item number 13.
No, I believe it does require all were, council took action on each appointment. So it.
On a ad hoc committee requires a vote?
It does, it's, it's, sorry.
Mr. Schnell, you want to weigh in on that?
The commission, this is, this is the Parks and Projects Commission now. And so I do believe there's language in there that says that council member by place can choose, but council has to, if I recall, Mr. Schnell.
I'm relying on Mr. Rapley's recollection without looking at the ordinance that the council passed on this issue. Just did not have a chance to look for that before this meeting.
And we do have it stated as discussion and possible action. So, I mean, if council would like to take action on, on the appointment.
He is my appointment and that's who I am appointing with council's approval, which I don't think is necessary.
Okay, we have a second for Mr. Judemire. Mr. Joyce.
Second.
Oh, okay, it was Mr. Paul already, so you can be the third. That being said, all in favor of Mr. Judemire? Unanimous. Thank you, council.
This way also, if I can, I will confirm that if in the future, if those don't need council action. But I know that Ms. Hopkey would like to have a meeting here soon. So we can allow Mr. Judemire to sit in on the meeting now, moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Item number 13, update from city council members on the face mask distribution to local businesses in the city of Castle Hills. You may remember, I guess a month or so back, I was able to secure several thousand face masks from Bear County. They were planning on giving these out to small businesses and I asked if we could help them get them there directly. And everybody up here has taken a box or two to go and pass them out. And I appreciate that as much as I know that the small business owners did as well. And I just wanted to get a follow-up where we're at because I also have to report that information back to the county. So, Mr. Isbrand?
Sure, so I had two boxes. I still have about half a box left. And it was actually nice to have them because a week or so ago, I went and visited one of our new businesses in the city and was able to bring them a gift from the city. So that, that was nice. I can't say enough how much our small business owners have really appreciated the effort by the city. Some of them probably didn't even know they were in Castle Hills. I think they'll remember it now. And I also discovered along the way, as I worked, the inner loop from basically Blanco Junction Inn and then other areas to work behind Mr. May on some of his area, how tremendous, tremendously grateful people are. And what really struck me is it's amazing how many different businesses and services we have in this city. And if anyone were to go through the same exercise we did, I think you could argue there's really not much of a reason to ever leave Castle Hills. So maybe Ms. Hopkey, that can be part of your, the brand campaign. But it's gone well. Everyone's very appreciative of it. And it's, it's, I'm hopeful to, that we might be able to make another round or two with what's left before it's all said and done.
Mr. Mayor, do we have permission to go outside the list we were given of businesses who signed up for the mask?
Not yet, sir. That's kind of why I'd like to make sure that at your leisure, that y'all can send me back everything that y'all have done. And then from there, we can see if we have the ability to go back or where we stand. Mr. Paul?
Yes, I gave my list to Mr. Rapley probably a month ago. And I got rid of all of them now because I'm a senior citizen now, only had one box. Sorry, Joe.
Mr. May?
Yes, I distributed to 24 businesses, the full increment of 2,000 face masks. And I have to echo what Councilman Isbrand said. They are so appreciative. Many of them asked me, what's the charge? What do I owe you? And I said, well, this is a rare opportunity in life to get something totally free that's going to be healthy for you and your customers.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
Well, like the other gentleman, I found it to be a very rewarding experience. Folks are really glad to see somebody from the city pay any attention to them at all. So it was, it was a nice experience. I would say I distributed the mask to probably 20 businesses out of the 31 or so I was assigned. I was a little bit dismayed to see that those dozen or so were actually closed. And so that's, that, you know, that suggests the need for what we're doing. So, but anyway, it was, it was a rewarding experience. And if there's more, I do have two little boxes left, so if there's more, we're ready to go.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Gregory?
Yeah, I have one business on my, on my list that's never open. It's always, it's there, but it's always closed. And I had an interesting little anecdote with one business. They couldn't believe what I was up to. So they had to call upper management, I don't know where that was, to make sure they weren't being the victims of something. So they eventually took the box as a mask. But people are appreciative, there's no question about it.
Thank you, council. And again, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank our partners at Bear County for making this possible. Proceeding on to item number 11, discussion of possible action on an appointment as an alternate member to the zoning commission. Counsel, I'm going to go ahead and pull this one for tonight because I have had not anybody reach out to me. If you're watching and you're interested or you know somebody that is, please have them reach out to me. I'd really like for them to want to do it. Lastly, discussion of possible action on appointments on one alternate member to the Board of Adjustment. Mr. Rapley?
Yes, Mayor, I think that there was, at the time, two alternates left. I think last meeting, Mr. Isband proposed one, and we filled that. So I believe there's one alternate position left to fill. So I put it back on here under old business in case anybody had reached out to you. We did not receive an application per se, but I didn't know if anybody reached out to any of y'all on council about being an alternate on B O A.
I saw Mr. May quick to the trigger.
I did reach out to someone who's been very active in the community, Patsy Martin. And, you know, we didn't realize until after the fact that she had served on the crime commission. And that was, that calculus was not really discussed. And I felt bad after the fact. But I think she would serve admirably in this position. I described in brief terms what they do. And because this is an alternate position, I think she would make an exceptional quick study and a good move for our community.
Thank you, Mr. May. A second by Mr. Paul. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much. And we'll proceed to announcements by mayor and council members. Mr. Isbrand?
So back on the subject of COVID a little bit and moving from the face masks, just a reminder to our independent small businesses in Castle Hills, that next Friday, the 18th, is the deadline to apply for the CARES Act funding that the city of Castle Hills is making available to those small businesses in our community that have had significant impact from the pandemic, either on their business or on their employees there. So I would just encourage everyone in our community to keep helping spreading the word about that. I think it was an incredible gesture on the part of the city and I compliment the mayor for his effort on this. And I hope that our business community will take advantage of the hand that we want to extend to them during this difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Paul? Mr. May?
I just want to update on the Castle Hills Historical Society Committee Initiative. We're up to five members. One is close to home, so I twisted some arms. But anyone else out there that is interested in our history and planning for next year and 2026, we have plenty of room.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
Just a reminder that our first meeting of the Castle Hills Business Association will take place a week from Friday, September the 18th at 7:30 in the Commons. All businesses, businesses are welcome. We're going to have refreshments. We're going to do some social distancing and hopefully get to know one another and learn from one another. And we're going to have a special guest speaker speaking on, someone very close to Kurt. Dr. Esteban is going to speak on COVID and how businesses can handle it at this time. So it should be very, very worthwhile. It'll be an hour from 7:30 to 8:30. So if y'all don't mind putting it out on your social media and however you communicate with folks, we'd appreciate your doing whatever you can to get the word out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Gregory? I'd just like to take a personal point of privilege to thank Rick and his team for putting together these plexiglass walls and making them as attractive as possible and keeping us safe. And to Mr. Rapley for finally getting our A V situation set up and getting us back on the dais. It feels comfortable and we have screens and people can see and people can hear. Lastly, I do want to recognize Sam Smith, who turned 95 on Saturday, on Sunday. We had the police and fire go by and gave him a nice little surprise that he wasn't expecting. So, Mr. Smith, happy birthday. And that being said, Mr. Rapley, I almost, almost forgot.
No, Mayor, you said everything that I said. I was just going to compliment Mr. Harada. He came in on weekends and worked to put these together along lines of getting the audio video. But this is all Mr. Harada's work up here and I appreciate his time and effort on it. And just a reminder, we have council meeting next week and then now the 23rd. So if you have any questions preceding those meetings, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. How in retain a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Motion, Mr. May? Second, all in favor? Everybody have a good evening. It's not 8:53.